Okay, good evening and welcome to the March 3 meeting. If I could ask everyone to stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the March 3 meeting. Uh, I'd like at this time to open up a public hearing, Local Law Number Five, 2020, establishing a property maintenance law in the Village of Monroe. Can I have a motion?
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Public hearing is now open and we'd like to hear from anyone in the public.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I pretty much agree with this in its entirety. Uh, just a, uh, just a couple of comments, questions. Regarding, um, under vehicle abandoned, inoperable. One thing that pops out to me is boat trailer, which is not a motorized, um, it's registered but not motorized.
Sure.
Um, and I have noticed several summers in a row, there's a boat trailer that gets parked on Whitman Place.
Yep.
That's gotta be every bit of eight feet wide.
Yeah.
You know the boat, you know what I'm talking about?
I do, yep, right across from six.
Um, yeah, they must take their, they must take their thirty-five foot boat or thirty-eight foot boat and put it somewhere, and the trailer stays on the street, um, although it is registered. I mean, I, I don't know if that's something that we wanna look at, um, because in the middle of the night, if you don't see that thing right, you're a good shot running into it.
That's a good point.
In re- in regards to, um, number four, which would be page four of eight, up at the top, number four, has been left unattended in the right-of-way of a designated county, state, or federal highway. Should we not have village right-of-way in there as well?
It's, it's mentioned, I believe, in other, that, that partic- I, I had a conversation with the attorney regarding this. So number four references roadways that are not governed by the Village of Monroe. Whereas there are already in our code.
Right.
There are, um, provisions for when a vehicle is on a village right-of-way, what the police department does with that.
All right, that would, but that-
That's-
Yeah, but that would be, would that be code enforcement or, uh, police jurisdiction?
That's police jurisdiction.
Okay, 'cause I don't think that's, um, I have to go back and look at the other, but I don't know if that's spelled out that way. I don't know, it's just-
I'll make a note of it, which one was it?
That would be on, uh, four of eight, page four of eight, up at the top, number four. Just so we don't run into any kind of issues down the road if, uh, it winds up in a, if it works. Grass to be trimmed, uh, height no more than six inches.
Mm-hmm.
That's fine, but it needs to be enforced.
Mm-hmm.
I, you know, you, you've heard me in the past, uh, with, with high grass, needs to be enforced.
Especially this summer.
Every summer.
Well, but more so this summer because we've had such a warm winter, so the deer ticks are going to be especially problematic.
The administrative fee, that's something you work on. But that, that's pretty much all I had. Um, the other thing, which I know was in a, in a separate section, uh, but I just wanna bring it to the board's, uh, attention, is the removal of snow from sidewalks for seventy-two hours.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's, you know, that needs to be shrunk down a little bit, especially in the, in the, in the school areas where the kids are walking to schools.
I took a look recently at the sidewalk, and I'm pretty sure that it was reduced to twenty-four hours.
When was that done?
Um, I wanna say, it was, yes.
Seventy-two?
Mm-hmm, you're absolutely right.
I recall, I recall that being done, but it was.
Um, I wanna say, and this is off the top of my head, but I wanna say that in 2018, prior to, uh, trustee Ally and I coming on the board, that was brought back to twenty-four hours. So maybe February-ish of 2018? I'll, I'll double-check for you, but I'm pretty sure that that was reduced to twenty-four hours.
I don't, I don't recall it, but, uh, if that's the case, then it's, then it's moot point.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, you know, again, it can be seventy-two versus twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
We're talking about snow on sidewalks.
Yep.
Um, but other than that, I, you know, this is, this is a good start and, um, let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the same thing with the, uh, basketball courts.
Mm-hmm.
And the same thing, which is really on the books, the garbage containers. On the books, you cannot keep a container on the street without filing, it's the, and everywhere.
Mm-hmm.
That's exactly what happened on coffee and, uh, what do you call it?
What kinda containers?
Yeah, garbage container. Property. It was on the property safe off the street. There's actually a statue on it, it wanna say, uh, one seventy dash fifty-four.
Sometimes the garbage man leaving them on the street, like was her with the garbage?
No, but you're supposed to file, but upstairs they didn't.
Okay. Not, not the garbage pails. Dumpsters.
Dumpsters.
Okay.
So, probably a couple of pieces. So, uh, question, counsel. Uh, so there's a couple of pieces I know you already had looked through extensively, and it sounds like you had a conversation. So are we gonna do some modifications here for tonight?
Yeah, I think maybe one more maybe to just clear it up.
Mm-hmm.
Has anyone got any other comments from anyone about it?
Mm-hmm.
No.
No, but I do know that is, is major concern about the actual maintenance.
Yes, John?
Yeah.
Tony Meoni, I was going to have something to eat, he appears to be unfortunately, he's, he's back in the hospital. And, uh, he was gonna try to get something here, uh, for, for, hopefully this public later, get something up. Holding this over, I think he would appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, so I think at this time, um, what I'd like to ask is, um, that we go through it again. Counsel is gonna do some modifications based on the public hearing tonight, and I think we could, uh, keep it open for written comments? Is that acceptable? Okay, so let's do that. So I need a motion to keep the, uh, public hearing open until our next meeting on, uh, March seventeenth?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thanks. Okay. So I need a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, not for the-
Well, we just, we just kept it open.
We just tabled it, right, 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 we just carried over.
We need a motion to-
Keep it open. All right, so, so there's no closing?
And we just, I think you just adjourned it.
We did that.
Yes, right, okay. Hello.
It's gonna be a long night.
Yes. Okay, I need a motion to open up the regular meeting of March third.
I'll make the motion that we open the meeting.
I'll second it.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie. First order of business, uh, I'd just like to address the public and, um, the board. Uh, we, uh, had lost a, uh, volunteer firefighter, Carl Martin, uh, last week. Uh, he's a fifty-three-year member of the Mon Beche Fire Company. He was a friend of mine for about forty years, and, uh, uh, we had a lot of, a lot of good times. Good man, and, um, he's at peace right now, so, uh, I wonder if I could offer a moment of silence, uh, on his, uh, behalf? Thank you. Okay, first order of business, um, I need the approval of, oh, okay. So the, uh, February fourth meeting minutes. Uh, does anyone, first off, before we get into this, uh, I wanted to table it till later. Uh, can we do that, or does anybody wanna talk about it? Do you want me to put a motion on the table for discussion first?
I'm okay with tabling it.
Okay, so let's just table it for now, we'll pick it up. Okay, awesome. All right, first order of business is the temporary appointment to full-time dispatcher, Brian Williams, trustee Hall.
Yes, and a memo from Chief Guzman. He asks that we appoint Brian Williams to the position of temporary full-time dispatcher, retroactive to February thirteenth, 2020, at the starting salary of forty-three thousand seven hundred sixty-eight dollars for a period of ninety days. Once approved, village clerk Baxter, um, will send an updated MSD to the county. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second it.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Next order of business is completion of probation, Officer Hanson, trustee Hall.
Yep, uh, and a memo from Chief Guzman. He writes to tell us that, um, police officer Douglas Hanson has completed the required probationary term required by Orange County Human Resources, uh, and he is hereby given permanent status for civil service requirements. An updated MSD four-two-six dash B will be submitted. I make a motion that we accept the completion of the probationary term of Douglas Hanson.
I'll make the motion, I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay, next order of business is a request for waiver for thirty-seven Still Road, uh, as the board recalls. Anytime.
I don't remember.
Okay, so thirty-seven Still Road, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I, I don't know, because I wasn't here, so I honestly don't remember. If I could refresh it, I could probably-
I will, absolutely. Okay, so the gentleman, uh, that lives and owns the house at thirty-seven Still Road, uh, was in the process of selling his home, and, uh, some open permits and, uh, issues came up in his house. Uh, he has, uh, dealt with them with the building department, and he got to the point.
I'm looking for it, sorry, no.
Okay.
Look ahead.
Okay, he's gotten to the point where, uh, he had one open piece of business left with the building department. Uh, he came to the board and asked for some relief, uh, to the penalty that's being, uh, implemented onto his, uh, application, uh, for, uh, three times the fee. Uh, the reason behind it is there was no form, uh, no permit prior to him first, uh, filing for a building permit. So as he, um- Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, what wound up happening was, uh, he came in with a, uh, a formal request, which I asked him to do. He did, and the board has taken up the measure, uh, which includes, uh, justifying his position. He provided us with county maps, uh, property tax information from our town assessor, and has shown that in fact the property had the building in place prior to his purchase in nineteen seventy-eight. And as does happen, uh, we get these occasions where, you know, we get residents to come in and either say that they haven't had, uh, an issue before, uh, they've done things without permits and so forth and so on, and we have to make decisions here. So at the end of the day, in this particular application, uh, we believe that, based on the information, or at least I do, I don't know if the other board members have anything to say about it, but, um, the applicant has shown to my satisfaction that in fact, uh, the property had been improved prior to his ownership, and, uh, therefore is asking the board for consideration of a waiver. He, he, he did the drawings, he had them stamped by an engineer, and he is compliance with the building department, and now what he's asking for is the pay, uh, the actual penalty of three times, uh, be waived by this board. But he did pay the fee and the, and the appropriate building, uh, application fees. Have you read the file?
I have read the file.
Okay. Trustee, manager?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Ally? Okay. Trustee Cocklin? Okay. So, uh, I need a motion to, uh, authorize the waiving of the penalty portion only of this applicant.
I'd like to, if you could just clarify, uh, Mayor, why we're considering waiving this one, uh, so it doesn't set a precedence-
Sure.
-of other people, um, only because this comes up every, you know, once you hear something where, where penalties are requested to be waived on existing structures?
Sure. So, um, what the fellow was able to do that typically does not come in here is we'll have somebody come in and tell us that, uh, that the finished basement was done prior to them moving into the home in nineteen seventy-three. And in fact, if we went in and opened up the light fixtures and saw a manufacturer date in nineteen ninety-two, I think that may present an issue, uh, any, some of the given techniques of construction. This gentleman has done something very different. He went and got the property cards clearly showing a picture of the space in question, and it shows clearly based on the property card's date, and that picture showing the, uh, enclosed porch, that in fact it was dated or installed prior to his ownership. So his question is, I don't wanna be penalized with something that I've been paying taxes on since nineteen seventy-eight in the application of the building permit. So what makes this different is that he's come in with facts showing factually that the property card, the assessor's report, and the supporting data show the square footage and everything in the same compliance, that this is, the other properties, like in, like a basement, for instance, it's within the envelope of the building, but we don't know, we have no way of, unless they could show us receipts, which they wouldn't have if they weren't the ones that did the work. It would predate them. So there has to be some ownership to what work has been done. Uh, and in this case, I think he has substantiated that, whereas, uh, others that we've had, we had a basement come in, and, um, basically the owner, uh, basically had to turn it back into storage space versus living space, and the building department required that the heat be taken out and the carpeting taken up. Most likely, the heat's back in place and the carpeting's back down, he no longer lives there, of course. So, who knows?
Okay, and I think it's important, the county card, um, that we pulled, it, it shows the enclosed slab porch as, um, they're nineteen sixty-one.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
That, that was what kind of confirmed to me that this gentleman should not be penalized, because not only does, has this been in place since before nineteen seventy-eight when he purchased the home, but the home was built in nineteen sixty-one.
Right.
And the, the deck was put up, even if it wasn't put up, as part of the new structure. It was put up prior to, from my understanding, prior to us developing the, the zoning.
That could be, yeah.
Right? So-
And prior to the uniform code.
And prior to the uniform code. So that would mean, I would like to think, that, um, some of what was done prior to that date would be grandfathered in.
Right.
As existing and accepted.
Right.
So he, this didn't happen later on.
Right, this, this fellow went out and did the homework, did the legwork and substantiated it, which to trustee Ally's point, makes the difference between this application or this applicant and others that come in with basements that are finished, uh, where they have nothing to substantiate other than the fact that that's what they, they moved into.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that doesn't help us to decide on this, so certainly we don't wanna see a precedent, and I know you're right, that could easily happen. So, okay, uh, I think, uh-
I'll second.
Okay, this-
Who made the motion?
Oh, thank you.
Second, trustee Ally? Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie. Okay. Okay. Uh, next order of business, uh, is a return to the Three Ten Stage Road project. Um, there were three, um, what do we call them, resolutions, counsel?
There were three declarations that-
Three declarations.
Were, um, penned by the applicant. Uh, one declaration was for, um, the maintenance, uh, uh, of a fire access road. One declaration is for, um, pump station maintenance, and then the other is for a sewer line in Stage Road.
Right.
So, we've been back and forth a little bit with this, trying to understand exactly where the applicant was at in front of the planning board, uh, trying to get a handle on the procedures that should be followed. I have reviewed the declarations themselves, which in fact would be filed in the chain of title and would run with the property, meaning that any one who bought the property thereafter would also be bound by these declarations. I do, do not have a word version of the declarations, so, so I wasn't able to actually modify them. Um, I did ask my secretary to transform them from PDF to Word. She was having a little bit of trouble with that, so, um, you know, I, she was able to do it, but not until just before I left. So what I did was I put together a, um, resolution that I sent to everybody somewhat late in the day that essentially authorizes this, uh, specifically these declarations, but, um, makes them subject to my final approval. So I'll probably go back and forth with the applicant's attorney for a period of time before we actually finish these up. Uh, and then puts other conditions as well, and I'm looking for that. Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so what I did was I, um, was a sewer pipe, a fire access road in signage, and I believe the third one was this, let me just find it here. A pump station, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I will add that to the resolution as well. Uh, and essentially, I basically said that, would you like me to read through this?
Please.
Okay, so whereas J Squared Builders, the owner of the property located at Three Ten Stage Road, has an application pending before the planning board that requires connection to the Orange County Sewer District Number One, and whereas the owner has requested permission from the Village of Monroe Board of Trustees to open Stage Road for the limited purpose of laying, uh, the sewer pipe, and whereas in furtherance thereto, the owner has offered to file a declaration in the property's chain of title that obligates the owner, his successors, and assigns to the cost of opening Stage Road, installing sewer pipes, closing and restoring Stage Road, and all future costs of maintenance of the sewer pipe, and any damages to Stage Road in connection with such maintenance. That's essentially what the declaration says. And whereas in addition to the sewer declaration, the owner has also requested the approval of declaration that bind the owner's successor and signs to maintain a fire access road with signage and the pump station. As determined by the planning board. So the planning board, of course, is reviewing all of this and will, as part of their approval, put certain conditions. So now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe hereby authorizes J Squared Builders, Inc. to file said declarations in the chain of title, and further authorizes the laying of sewer pipes in Stage Road, subject to the following condition. First condition would be that, uh, they receive final approval of the project issued by the planning board in compliance with any conditions that the planning board puts on that approval. Two, final review and approval of the declarations by the village attorney. Three, obtaining a road opening permit issued pursuant to chapter one seventy of the village code. So there's already a procedure in place in one seventy that, uh, the water superintendent issues the, uh, road opening permit and supervises any work that's being done in the road. DPW. Depositing, thank you, depositing escrow with the Village of Monroe in an amount determined by the village engineer for inspection and approval of all work done on Stage Road. So we do, we, what we will expect is that the applicant will put numbers together as they do with anything that they're, they typically propose to the planning board. Those numbers are approved by the village engineer, and then that would become part of the ongoing maintenance, et cetera. Five, depositing escrow in the amount of two thousand dollars with the Village of Monroe to reimburse the village for any legal costs associated with the review of the declarations. If someone's coming to the village board and asking for a license, or an agreement, or a privilege, um, you know, it, it really should be the applicant who pays for any services that you have to incur costs on their behalf. It won't be much, but, and they'll get whatever isn't spent back. Six, posting security in an amount approved by the village engineer for the opening and restoration of Stage Road, installation of the sewer pipe, and maintenance for a period of no less than one year after the certificate of occupancy has been issued to the project. So it may be that John Orrock comes back with, he wants maintenance for two years or five years. That is something I think, uh, this basically allows the applicant to move forward with the planning board while I'm negotiating the declarations. So if we hear back from John that it's a longer term, then we'll put that in the declaration itself. And seven, proof of filing the declaration in the office of the Orange County Clerk, and said proof will be provided to the village clerk, and all costs of the recording of the declaration shall be the sole responsibility of the owner. So this essentially allows the applicant to move forward before the planning board while we are negotiating in detail these declarations.
Okay. The applicant is here. Is there anything that you'd like to talk about, Paul? Just to give to the board, or Mike, or?
No, everything you said was reasonable to talk about.
Okay.
I would add also, uh, my lawyer can definitely provide like an edible PDF for her.
Sure. So I was gonna ask, maybe what you could do is, uh, just if you would give the clerk, uh, maybe an email address that they can correspond?
Okay, I'd rather reach out to her.
Good, okay, thanks very much. Okay, so, um, I think at this time the motion would be to, uh, accept declarations pursuant to your review and-
Yeah, you would just move on this resolution with the, um, uh, with the correction that I made regarding the pump station.
Right.
And then, um, and then approve the, the resolution itself, and then we'll all move forward with the actual declarations.
Sure. Okay.
All right, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay, uh, next order of business is the authorization to sign the two thousand nineteen CDBG, uh, Spring Street sidewalk grant. Uh, there's an amendment, uh, and I'll just read the resolution and then we'll discuss, um- Thank you, Mike. You thought you were gonna have a busy night, didn't you?
That was all I said.
Okay. So, uh, resolve the Board of Trustees authorized Mayor Dwyer to sign the amended two thousand nineteen Community Development Block Grant Agreement, which increases the funding from sixty thousand to seventy-five thousand for the Spring Street ADA sidewalk project. And just before we, we go to that, uh, I just wanna give the board, uh, just a clear understanding. We initially, uh, requested, uh, a grant proposal, I believe, and, and it might have been two hundred, I don't remember, two hundred thousand dollars. We were given fifty thousand dollars to continuation of that project on Spring in North Main. Then, uh, legislator Pete Toohey was able to secure another ten thousand additional dollars for us, bringing it to sixty thousand. And then I went and spoke with the, uh, uh, the group up there, Nicole Anderson and so forth, and, uh, she was, uh, after a review by the committee that actually awards the money, gave us an additional fifteen thousand toward the project, so that's how we got the seventy-five thousand toward this project. So, um, I just wanted to bring the board up to speed on that. Okay, so, uh, I need a motion, uh, to authorize, uh, Mayor Dwyer to sign this agreement.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay. Next order of business, the continuation of the Smith Farm Water District. Counselor, I'm gonna hand that off to you.
Okay, so the town attorney and I have been going back and forth a little bit on this Smith Farm Water District Agreement. We requested some changes, they requested some changes. The version that I sent you today is the result of an agreement on our changes as well as adding back in a forty-five day limit, which is something they asked to be back in. So I am satisfied with this water agreement. The board has reviewed it in the past.
Right.
The only change after you reviewed it was again the thirty to forty-five days, and that was simply for resort to legal action if the town doesn't pay the village the water bill. Still paid in thirty days, but now forty-five days before the village can resort to something not within the contract itself. So I'm satisfied with this, and I would recommend that the board adopt it, or actually authorize the mayor to sign it.
So I need a, a motion to authorize the mayor to sign this Town of Monroe, Smith Farm Water Agreement with the Town of Monroe.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay, new business, request to travel, New York State Tactical Officers Training, Anthony Grasso, trustee who?
Yes, in a memo from Chief Guzman. He is requesting that the board approve the attendance of Sergeant Anthony Grasso to attend the twenty twenty Tactical Training Conference and Expo held on April twentieth through April twenty-third, twenty twenty in Verona, New York. The training will provide Sergeant Grasso with the needed certifications as a use of force and general topics instructor. Of course, the cost of the training is three hundred forty-nine dollars, and hotel accommodations for the three nights is five hundred twenty-five dollars, for a total of eight hundred seventy-four dollars, and will be taken from line A, three one two zero point four seven two education. So I make a motion that we approve Chief, Chief Guzman's request of sending Sergeant Anthony Grasso for this training.
Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Next order, stop DWI service agreement, trustee who?
Yes, in my final memo from Chief Guzman. He asks that the Board of Trustees approve an agreement with the county, with Orange County that authorizes the Village of Monroe Police Department to participate in the Stop DWI Traffic Safety Program for one year beginning on March thirteenth, twenty twenty and ending January first, twenty twenty-one. The first period will be from March thirteenth, twenty twenty through May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, for a total not to exceed four thousand two hundred forty-four dollars per sixty hours. The second period will run from July third, twenty twenty through September eighth, twenty twenty, and the third period will run November sixth, twenty twenty through January first, twenty twenty-one. I make a motion that we authorize Mayor Dwyer to execute this agreement with the county.
I have just one question.
Yeah.
I don't recall in the past it ending on January one, right?
It, it's not a full year, but generally it takes into account the holidays most associated with the consumption of alcohol. So if you notice, it starts just before St. Patrick's Day, and it ends on New Year's Day. From January first through St. Patrick's Day, we really don't have any big holidays. So this, this would cover the overtime that the village would incur based on DWI enforcement.
Sure. I mean, the funding is there regardless, the hours are there, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Doesn't change, it's just a matter, just the way it functional.
Yeah.
Yeah, just curious. Okay, I need a motion? Okay, seconded, done. Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Next order of business, authorization to sign the two thousand twenty Ace Tent Amusement Corp. Agreement with the Village of Monroe for the carnival week of August sixth through August ninth. The Board of Trustees has been presented with a contract from Ace Tent Amusement Corp. for the annual twenty twenty carnival, the dates of the event are Thursday, August sixth through Sunday, August ninth, twenty twenty. The agreement states that there'll be fourteen to sixteen rides furnished by Ace Tent Amusement, with ticket prices, prices ranging from a dollar twenty-five per ticket, twenty tickets for twenty dollars, forty-five for forty dollars, and twenty-five dollar wristbands for unlimited rides. Ace Tent Amusement will supply one hundred posters promoting the event as well as three banners printed with information provided by the committee. Additionally, there will be given one hundred dollars per game donated to the Village of Monroe, and Ace Tent Amusement will supply the Village of Monroe with thirty-five percent of the gross receipts. Ace Tent Amusement also will include the following food trailers, cotton candy, ice cream, funnel cake, and zeppelins, hot dogs, hamburgers, sausages, and peppers. Ace Tent Amusement will also provide a five million dollar insurance policy naming the Village of Monroe as additionally insured, as well as workman's compensation. Ace Tent Amusement will also provide four portasands and one ADA compliant portasand, as well as contribute twenty-three hundred dollars toward the event as security for the event. Now, be resolved, the Board of Trustees approve the twenty twenty contract agreement provided by Ace Tent Amusement for the annual Village of Monroe Carnival to be held on Crane Park, August sixth through August ninth, twenty twenty. I need a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Is that an increase in the percentage that we're going to receive?
Yes, it is.
That is sweet.
It's the thirty-two things, it was thirty percent, it's now thirty-five percent, and the concerns of the board were the rides that were, that were being provided to us. The Ace Amusement has stated that, you know, we can choose the rides, but just be mindful that things may have to change based on weather, based on how the, the Crane Park is at the time of the carnival. So that's something that they've left up to us at this point.
Excellent.
But the thirty-five is definitely a.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Okay, so.
Call a question?
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. I didn't see it on the agenda, not that I asked for it on the agenda, but it's not on the agenda. Was the, we took up the public hearing on the term reduction.
Mm-hmm.
Right, we closed the public hearing, and I think counsel, if I'm right, we can adopt? So I need a, a motion to adopt the terms.
Local law number four, twenty twenty.
Local law?
Mending chapter fifty-five terms of office.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay. All right, okay. Um, okay, I think we've completed our agenda, counsel, is there anything on your end?
So there's no discussion of the, sort of, the, 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 there's no discussion of?
No. Okay. I'd just like to say again, restating from the beginning of the meeting, one of the greatest things about this community, this town, is when, when this community needs each other, we step up and, and we, we hit the mark. We did it once again for Carl Martin, and I couldn't be prouder of everybody's participation, especially the fire company for doing everything they did. Smith team in Quackenbush for doing absolutely stunning and really devout job for him. It was, it was very poignant and clearly the man left his mark in this community, so I'm really proud of this community as a whole. We seem to know how to circle wagons and take care of business, and I'm really proud of all of us for doing that. And, and thank you to John Carl back there, I do appreciate all your efforts, John, on behalf of Keller. As I said, I, I knew him, for the first time I met him at the diner, I was twenty years old, I just finished leaving Jimmy seventeen. I needed something to eat before I went home, and there he was. And I've known him since, and he was a good guy. That's all I have, trustee who?
I, I would just echo, it was a very nice send-off for Mr. Martin. It was nice to see how the fire department came together, how the village police department. It, it's, it's interesting how you see an overlapping of the volunteer services in this community. There were people who I recognized from the ambulance corps who were also part of the fire department. I can't stress enough how important it is for people to step up and become volunteers in this community, and that's just what makes us stronger, so thank you to all of them.
I basically had the same notes I wrote down. You know, when, when something like this happens, I know, we know we live in a great town and village, but when something like this happens, it is great to see everyone come together and lean on each other and just, you know, the way everybody works together, and it just makes us remember what a great place we live in.
I just want to thank John honestly. You were an awesome friend to Carl, and when he had nobody else, he had you and Nicole, and I think it's a huge tribute to the person that you are, John, so I've said it through text messages with you over the weekend. I think you're an incredible person. That's all I got.
Trustee Ali?
I do not have anything, I wasn't in attendance, but doesn't mean, I, I don't feel the same sentiments as the rest of the board.
You know, I was talking to a prospective business owner today, and he had asked why he should come to Monroe. And I gave him what I thought was the right answers, and he said, you know, I gotta tell you something, he says, I've never seen a town and a village come together the way you all do for each other. He said, it's amazing, it's a testimony, he says, you actually really do care.
I, I actually just ran into someone today, Tony knows too, who just moved here from Pine Bush area to Monroe, and I ran into him, and he's like, we love it. He said his kids are doing great, they moved here in twelfth grade and eighth grade, and they were so excited to live here, and he said it has just been amazing, the neighbors, the school, everyone, so.
Cool.
It's good to hear.
Okay, public comment? Sir?
Thank you. Just a question on three oh one stage road with that force main.
Sure.
It's gonna be in the street, but it'll be owned by the.
Property owner, and it will transfer with whoever owns that property, all of it.
I want to thank you for getting that garbage cleaned up here in the back, it looks a hundred percent better.
Yeah. Yep.
What's the status with the floor area ratio?
We're just tweaking it, there's a couple of pieces, I'm gonna let counsel, if you want to add to anything on it.
No, the public hearing's been closed.
Right.
The secret has been completed. The board had just a few questions about some minor tweaking of the local law, and then I believe the board will be ready to adopt it.
I've got a question. I guess there's a couple of houses now on Franklin Avenue that are getting ready to be raised.
Sure.
Would this law prevent that?
It won't prevent them from being raised, but they would, assuming the board adopts the local law before the houses come in, the owners come in for a new building permit, they would be subject to the FAR.
Right.
You know, what happened up on Scunamunk Street, we're just kind of losing the character of the village.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why the board took it up, right?
It, it, it needs, something needs to be addressed.
Absolutely.
So then the taxi ordinance?
Still working on it, it's, here's, here's the glitch. We've vetted it, we did public workshops with business owners, everything's good, we adopted it, it's part of the seventeen code review. Just not enforcing it, however, after that was made out, you know, you had said that to me, I went and checked, and there's actually enforcement, there actually is. It may not be to the degree that the law suggested is, but Chief Guzman was compiling data to support the fact that there is enforcement. I don't know if he gave it to you?
Yes, yeah, he's, he's putting it together for me, it's quite extensive.
Yeah.
The, the, the catch is that in order for us to enforce it, the, the taxi code, the law from twenty seventeen, the origination of the fare comes into play. So we can enforce anything that happens here in, in the Village of Monroe, but if it comes from outside, it becomes very difficult. So there have been plenty of opportunities for the Village of Monroe Police Department to, to purposefully target anyone who does pick up a fare in the Village of Monroe, and making sure that all of the registrations and licenses and maintenance of the vehicles are, are compliant.
Also the horn blowing?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I know, that's a major concern.
Well, that's, that's definitely, that falls under the quality of life.
Delivery, delivery vans and stuff that are coming, the horn blowing is just, it's.
Yeah.
It starts seven o'clock in the morning.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Agreed, and, and they've done details, when he gets the data together, we, we can, we can bring it up again, but they've done details where they've done undercover work, and they're, they're nailing people. The stats are gonna be, I think, pretty shocking.
Visions like that.
Uber is an issue too.
It is, but you know what?
Uber. Uber and Lyft.
The last thing I got with your carnival, now that you have your control valve.
Yep. Yep.
Carnival is set up up there, and you've got, you hear heavy rains are coming.
Yep.
Drop the pond.
Yeah, he did it last year.
If you lower that pond.
All the drains, water, the water drains.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
If you leave the ponds full, everything just saturates, and then it's a mess.
Well, that's what happened two years ago. That's exactly what happened, absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John.
And again, on behalf of Carl Martin, thank you.
Thank you, John, okay. Anyone else from the public? Okay. So I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make the motion that we go into executive session.
And litigation on both the town and the village's side.
A second.
Okay. Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you, thank you everyone, and good night.
Good night.
I need to do something real quick, an executive, then can I have you guys come in after that, you mind? So Kim will take you inside. Yeah. I think you, I think you'd probably want to step inside, but I'll leave it up to you.